...that because we've had folks over the past time who were talking to their neighbor during the meeting and were surprised when they watched on the replay of it that their conversation actually got picked up and you could understand it. So, I like to give everybody that warning of just be careful, don't, if you talk to somebody, make sure it's a whisper because otherwise it may wind up on the tape. All right, and we are ready to plug in and begin. All right, this is the Village of Peatone Board Meeting for October 13, 2014. We begin by rising to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Forsyth.
Here.
Okay, let's record show that a quorum is present, we may officially conduct business. First order of business being the approval or correction of the minutes from the last regular meeting on September 22, 2014. Trustees, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as offered, or if you see a reason to correct them, let us know what that correction would be.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to accept the minutes, approve the minutes for the September 22, 2014 Quorum Meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries and the minutes are approved and become the official record of that meeting. Next item on the agenda is accounts payable and payroll. Trustees, you have in your package the payroll for the pay period ending September 27, 2014, in the amount of $44,718.74. You also have, under accounts payable, bills from the general fund totaling $41,015.72, and two categories of bills from the water and sewer fund, one in the amount of $650.90, and another, a series of bills totaling $46,178.41. Brand total for all the category of bills except the payroll is $87,845.3. I will entertain a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Hack, to pay the bills as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
And Mr. Hupkey.
Yes. Okay, motion carries and the bills paid accordingly. We come to the point on the agenda for public comment and/or questions about any non-agenda item. In other words, if the item is coming up on the agenda later, we will let you speak at that point on that topic. Is there anybody here for any non-agenda item? No, you're on the agenda. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on with the agenda. And the next item is the police chief's report.
Nothing today.
Okay. Homecoming Parade went off well.
Yeah, and if anybody needs candy, I'm sure there's a few pieces still left on the street. I don't know how many tons of it was passed out, but I'm sure the dentists are hating us all.
That's good business. All right, engineers report. Troy, any updates?
The Wilmington Road Lift Station Generator Project is out to bid, and the bid opening will be October 21. And then, the street paving project has gotten started. They've done some concrete work on the streets. They started on the school parking lots. They'll be starting on the library soon. We don't have a firm date on when they're going to start the bridge work yet. They don't want to have it close longer than possible, that's why they're waiting. So, hopefully soon.
Okay, and we were hoping they would start the bridge first because that would tell us how much money we had left over to do some of the other paving things. Okay. Trustees, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the agenda. There is nothing under old business under new business. Peatone Scout Troop 315, permission to conduct door-to-door sales Saturday, November 1 and Monday, the 3. And who we have representing Scout Troop 315? Would you step up to the microphone?
Pull it down. Pull it down a little bit.
There we go. Tell us your name. We want to officially get in the record. We may ask you to spell the last name too, probably. So, tell us your name.
Bobby.
Bobby?
Wilcox.
Wilcox. W-I-L-C-C-O-X. All right. Go ahead, Bobby.
Peatone Boy Scout Troop 315 will be hosting their 24th Annual Spaghetti Room on Saturday, November 15, at the Peatone American Legion from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We are requesting permission to canvas the town to sell tickets on Saturday, November 1, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. and on Monday, November 3.
Okay. And would you also tell us your name?
Bradley Tennyson.
Spell your last name, please.
T-E-N-N-I-S-L-U-N.
Thank you, Bradley. Go ahead.
From 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., the ticket prices are $7 for adults and children under 4 and 3. The dinner includes spaghetti, salad, garlic bread, or bread and butter, a variety of desserts, coffee, water, or lemonade. Carryouts will also be available.
Okay, and as having sampled most of the spaghetti dinners that you've done in the past, I can tell everybody you will get more food than you probably could eat if you want it. And I don't think you'd find a cheaper price to get the food that you wind up getting. So trustees, I will entertain a motion to approve the request of Scout Troop 315 to conduct door-to-door sales Saturday, November 1 and Monday, November 3, spaghetti dinners and hours. And also noting in there that the, I'm looking for the date. November 15 is the date of the actual spaghetti dinner at the American Legion Hall.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to grant permission to Scout Troop 315 to conduct door-to-door sales and for their spaghetti dinner on November 15. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes. Okay. Motion carries. Good luck with your sales and make sure you see most of us because most of us at this table will wind up buying a spaghetti dinner.
That dinner's from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., right? I just wanted to get that on the TV.
Yep. All right, next item of business has to do with the Girl Scouts getting permission to go door-to-door for fall product sale. And from the Girl Scouts, we have, you can move the microphone up so we can hear you. There you go. Caitlin, what was your last name?
Lexow.
Lexow. Okay. L-E-X-O-W?
Yeah.
All right. Just checking the spelling. Got to get it right in the record.
On behalf of the Girl Scouts, serving since 2014, I am asking for permission to sell fall product from now until November 1, and to sell cookies from January 1 through April 1.
Okay. Trustees, any questions?
Motion. Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hack, to grant permission to the Girl Scouts to go door-to-door for their fall product sale and cookie sales, and let have the dates and times designated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
And Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck with your sales.
Thank you.
Most of us will be picking up on the Girl Scout cookies among others. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is establishing the Halloween trick-or-treat hours for December 31. Traditionally, the hours have been 4 to 7 p.m. on the day of Halloween, which is Friday, October 31. I don't think there's any question.
Motion.
Seconded by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hupkey, to establish the trick-or-treat hours for Halloween as being 4 to 7 p.m. on Friday, October 31, 2014. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan.
Well, okay, there is, I'm sorry.
Moved to the high school. I see my note.
Yeah, but now it's moved back again. There was an update late Friday, I think. They initially thought paving would be a problem. That's out of the way now, so now they're moving it back to the Park District. So, the letter you have in front of you is correct information. I apologize for the confusion, but didn't make the package. Motion.
Okay. Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Wicker, to grant permission to the Chamber of Commerce to have an open burn for a hot dog roast on October 31 from 4 to 7 p.m. at the Park District. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan.
Motion carries, and we're all looking forward to the hot dog roast. The next item of business on the agenda is a business registration for Sammy's Pizza. Is there somebody from Sammy's Pizza here?
Probably remodeling.
Yeah. All right. George, you want to go through that one?
Milton Manal has submitted a business registration form to operate a Sammy's Pizza Restaurant at 422 South Governors Highway. Sammy's Pizza Peatone is a new addition to the local chain of Sammy's Pizza Restaurants. Other restaurant locations are Cankey Key, Bourbonian Moments. Chain is a family-oriented restaurant that serves pasta, pizza, wraps, salads, appetizers. Their menu is available online for inspection. Committed use in that zoning category, so there are no zoning issues related to the request.
Okay, and the first item of business related to Sammy's Pizza is a motion to approve the business registration.
Motion. Second.
Second. All right. Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hupkey, to approve the business registration of Sammy's Pizza Peatone. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
I abstain.
And Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and business registration is officially approved. Next item has to do with ordinance to add one Class E liquor license designated to Sammy's Pizza of Peatone.
This is a Class E liquor license, which is a restaurant that will serve, also serve alcohol. And the ordinance would, we have zero Class E at the current time. The ordinance would effectively move the number of Class E liquor licenses available from zero to one, and then designate that liquor license to Sammy's Pizza of Peatone.
Okay, this would be ordinance 14-12. Do I have a motion to?
Motion.
Second. Okay, motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hack, to grant the Class E liquor license to Sammy's Pizza of Peatone. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
I abstain.
Motion carries, and the ordinance is official, 14-12 is officially adopted. Next item is another business registration, the Fire Pit Bar and Grill. I believe we have people here from there. If you'd come forward, please.
Yeah.
Let us know who you are.
My name's Lisa Fredericks. I'm looking for business and for the liquor license for opening up the fire pit and where the beer tube is to be. I have a menu here if you guys want to look at it. It's just, I just started it. I've not completed with it.
I think if you describe, you know, the items on there, it doesn't have to be perfect, you know, totally complete.
I got three of them for you guys to work on, so.
All right, while we're looking, tell us about the business you're hoping to open up.
I'd like to open like a little restaurant with liquor. I want to open up the patio. I know there's a lot of border problems we have to work out there. I haven't purchased the property yet because I want to make sure I can get both the liquor license and the business license. And I want mostly comfort food. What's on the menu is going to be basically simple stuff, but I want to do specials. I'm a very good cook. So, I like to, I want to play around and see what the town likes, you know. I don't want to, I want hamburgers, brats, chicken, fish, just kind of like a little bit of everything. I'll start with steaks like on the weekends and see how that goes. You know, I don't want it to be a huge restaurant. I want it to be a nice quaint little place. That's, I plan on doing a little remodeling on the inside and then gradually as years go on, continually to remodel it. The outside, we have to put a new roof on, and that won't be until the summertime. And then, we also have to paint it or stain it, one of the two. But the outside's pretty, you know, if you stain it and you put a new roof on, it looks pretty good.
Have you had a restaurant before, or?
No, but I have been in the business for 20 years. I started as a bus girl when I was 15. And I worked my way to waitressing. I've done just about every aspect of the business you can do except for manage and own. And I really don't think there's anything I can learn unless, except for owning your own business, taking it to a new level.
Okay. Trustees, do you have any questions? What about parking?
Right now, I'm happy with 15 parking spots. And if I can work it out with people in the store, maybe a little, the little spot over there they used to park at over there. I don't want it really big at first. I really want to start off smart, you know, kind of a small business and work my way into be turning, turning into a bigger business. I know the place behind the house, behind the business is for sale. Now, once I get the business going, if it's still there, I might inquire about that and maybe zone it to be all one. If I do anything, it's going to be zoned all one. I don't want these property problems here. And see if I can turn it into a parking spot. Other than that, I have talked to the guy who used to do the valet parking across the street. I talked to the son, Bob, and he said his father would be willing to rent me the parking space if I need it. I mean, if it's going to turn into, if it turns in big, real big, right after the get-go, I'll deal with that. But I really want small first. You know, I guess small's the wrong word, but I just kind of want to make it a like quaint little place.
I'll tell you what's typical. Anytime anybody opens up a restaurant, it's the new place, and the first month, everybody wants to try it. So, you need to expect that.
Yeah, I do. I do expect that.
It can rush the first month, and then it may taper off.
Yeah, I do expect that for the first month. Everyone wants to try it. Everyone wants to see it. And I know for the first couple months, probably first three months, I'm going to see if I can get the parking across the street. But after that, I don't, you know, that's usually what happens. They want to check it out the first time, and then usually then you get a small little gathering.
To follow up on the parking question that was answered, this is more just a personal request, but one thing I would ask you to please take a look at, right on the corner of the property is a telephone pole. Please do what you can to make sure cars don't park to the east of that pole where they partially block the view on Route 50. When cars park in front of that pole.
Okay.
It's very difficult to see traffic coming south on Route 50. You have to go out quite far. Corning, Corning is the side street there, and you have to go out pretty far on Route 50 before you can see around a car parked. You'll see what I mean if you take a look. There's the telephone pole is. If someone puts their, their front plate up against that pole, because people have used that as a parking spot before, it becomes very difficult to see the traffic on Route 50. So, just something to keep in mind.
Maybe I can put something there that makes it so they can't do it.
I think that that's what they did with the last owners there. I just, I just wanted you to be aware.
Typically, what they've done in the past is paint it, stripe it, no parking.
He used to run the valet parking office, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what he did.
Okay.
Okay. Trustees, other questions? You from this area?
I'm from Wilmington, but I, I lived in Manteno for 15 years. I've worked in this area for, I worked at the Culture Place for the last 10 years. I work at the bowling alley now for the last year.
What attracted you to Peatone?
I love Peatone.
Right into.
No, I do. I love it. I mean, I live in Wilmington, but I live on the outskirts. And I'm actually only two miles from Peatone, and a mile from Manteno, and a mile from Cankey Key. So, I'm like right in the middle of, could have been anyone's property, you know. But I love, yeah, I love Peatone. Peatone's such a nice quaint little town. It's, it's nice.
We'll see where you sit on the football game next time. It's in Wilmington though.
All right, trustees, right now we're looking at the business registration. We'll entertain a motion to.
Motion. Second.
Okay. Accept the business registration, trusty Forsyth, and seconded by trustee Hupkey. Now, when you're ready, call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries, and business registration is approved. Next item has to do with the liquor license. Do we have one or two?
Two. One is the E that would accompany the restaurant, the standard E classification. That's the first item. Next item on the agenda after that item is an O license for basically a bureaucracy.
Which is existing out there already. All right. Trustees, any questions relative to the Class E liquor license, which is similar to the one we just approved earlier? Considering that we used to have one here, now I make a motion we grant the.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to approve the Class E liquor license for Fire Place Bar and Grill. This would be ordinance 14-13. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Okay, Class E liquor license is approved. Next item is an ordinance to grant the Class O outdoor liquor license to Fire Pit Bar and Grill.
Second. Make a motion.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by.
Second.
Trustee Hack. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Motion carries, and that's ordinance 14-14. So, you got ordinances 13 and 14.
Thank you.
Welcome to Peatone.
Thank you.
We wish you luck, success.
Thank you.
All right, next item gets away from everything else and gets us into real estate. An ordinance to act on a petition allowing a variance at 130 Orchard Court, to allow apartment building with eight apartment units instead of the maximum of seven units per building. Property is generally situated at 130 Orchard Court, and the petition is filed by Phil Borgo, the petitioner, MCT Incorporated. Phil, you're here. Tell us about the property.
All right, we have recently purchased the lot known as 130 Orchard Court. This lot was originally platted back in the late 70s. All the apartment buildings, all eight-unit apartment buildings were built around this lot. For some reason, they never built anything on this lot. It was always platted and zoned and ready to go. Sewer waters run to it, storm water, drains are already run to it. It's ready to go. The unfortunate aspect is that from the time it was planted and approved to today is that, of course, in all towns, you guys have upgraded your requirements, increased the amount of land necessary per unit for an apartment building, a multifamily building. And what that has done is, in order for planning for your future, this old parcel of property got caught in the middle. And what it means is that this lot that was originally designed for a minimum of an eight unit is now only capable of supporting a seven unit based on your current codes and ordinances. Everyone around it is an eight unit. I'm asking for the opportunity to get a variance so that I can build an eight unit. A seven unit, just so you understand, is not financially viable. I have been in apartments, well, perhaps since I was just a small child. My father and my mother have owned apartments for many years. We created, or I created MCT back in about 89, I think. To date, we own 85 apartments. We build, own, and manage all of our properties. We primarily build either from the ground up, or we buy apartment buildings that are in rough shape, gut them and remodel them, and put them back on the, on the market, or put them back out there so we can collect the highest and best rents. I currently have 45 units, I believe, in Manhattan. I have 20 units in Plainfield, 20 units in Ottawa. I want to build eight units here in Peatone. I'm currently in negotiations to purchase 22 additional units in that same area that if we're lucky, we're currently negotiating a price. If we get that, we will be gutting those and spending over $300,000 remodeling those apartments and bringing them up to a higher standard. So, this whole, I want to come to Peatone. I'm looking to expand my operations. I believe that Peatone is underserved. I believe that there is a desire for a new, better, bigger product. And by that, what I mean is, if you've looked at any of my materials, we have built this building four years ago in Manhattan. It is four units down, four units on the second floor. It's each two-bedroom, one-bath apartment. It's 1,050 square feet of living space. It consists of a large living room, a very good-sized dining area, a good-sized kitchen, full bath, two bedrooms, and what's most important is it includes its own washer and dryer utility room in every single apartment. And this is, if you're not in the industry, you don't understand, this is a huge deal. To give you an idea, in Manhattan, I have, I owe 200. To give you an idea, in Manhattan, I have, I own 200 Morgan Court and 210 Morgan Court. 210 Morgan Court is the newest product and the floor plan that you see here. In that building right now, I'm getting $1,100 a month plus utilities. The building right next to it does not have the laundry facilities in it. It's 950 square feet, two bedroom, one bath. And in that property, I'm only getting, I'm at 950 now. So, that is the difference. So, we want to bring that product here. I know it's going to go over very well. It will be something new to the, new to the area. I've spoken with the other property owners that own the buildings around my building. They're very anxious and interested in me coming in because they believe if I come in and I bring in this product, they will be able to hopefully raise their rents a little bit because it's my understanding that their rents have been stagnant for about the last four or five years. And that's not good. If stagnant rents means that there's not a significant enough cash flow coming in a lot of times to make constant steady maintenance and repairs. And repairs are what's necessary and maintenance is what's necessary to continually to attract the highest and best quality clients and clientele into your building. In this particular area, what I've discovered from my research is that the highest amount of rent I can generate from these apartments is $800 a month. That's what everyone is generating right now. So, if it, if I cannot get this eighth unit, the building will not cash flow. I cannot build it. It just doesn't work. Seven is a very odd number. It's going to be very difficult to design a building cost efficiently to handle seven units. We are looking to put in a good quality product. We will have oak door, oak trim, oak cabinetry, Berber carpeting. Not sure if we're going to put in a pergono type floor in some areas. We will have stove, refrigerator, dishwasher, air conditioning in all the units. What else can I tell you? We're very hands-on. We don't put up with fools. We do a very strict background check on all of our tenants. And I learned a long time ago, you don't just fill an apartment with anybody that comes to you with a check. You vet them, you research them, you confirm their salary, you confirm their employment, you confirm their references. And if everything works out, then you rent it out to them. And you further head to leave an apartment open and get the right person in, then fill it right away and get the wrong person in. Because that one bad person or family will drive out three good people. Happens all the time, but not in my buildings. I know that we want to be good neighbor with, of course, all the single family residential homes to the east of us. We want to be good neighbors to all of the other apartment building owners. We believe very strongly in strong landscaping and architecture. And we want to come into your community. I believe you've seen some of the floor plans, some of the architecture. You will notice that in our apartment buildings, we're not like the ones that are currently out there in that we do not have common areas. And for some people, I think that's unusual. And it is unusual in that today's clientele want to feel like they are, have their own condo. They don't want to enter into a hallway. They like the idea of having a deck or a balcony like you will see on our properties. It creates a more inviting area, more inviting environment. The other thing is that it's more cost efficient for maintenance to have, to remove the interior common areas. And the best thing about it is that you can assimilate those common areas into living areas. And that's more important. People would rather have a larger apartment than a smaller apartment with common areas. We have built, went to, three buildings with this concept and it's been very, very successful. People really like it.
Mr. Borgo, I also believe that you stated the building will be fully sprinkled?
Yes. What I've agreed is that we are going to be installing a particular product. It's not cement board. We, I did research on cement board and there have been some, a lot of warranty issues with cement board type material. And what I am proposing to you is a product by LP Siding. Several of the gentlemen that were on the Planning and Zoning Committee were very familiar with this product. They've used this product and they gave it thumbs up. They think it's a very good product. It's pre-finished, it's very durable. The most important thing about it compared to cement board is it does not crack. What they've been having problems with, with cement board is that if the building at all shifts, cement board has no ability to bend and flex. So, what does it do? It cracks. And once it cracks, then you have to go through and take all the other pieces of siding down, replace that one piece, put it all back up. This has some flexibility in it and it doesn't crack. It's got a, I believe, like 25 to 30 year warranty on it. And from my research on the internet and talking with siding suppliers, there have been no warranty claims on this product and it's been out on the market for, I think, 10 plus years. So, this is what I want to bring in. This represents close to the color pattern of what I want. You'll see that I have a darker color on the first floor. There'll be a white trim board all the way around it. There'll be white corner boards. Windows are all be trimmed in white. We've done a little bit of detail on the gables on it as well. This will be the second floor and the accent color will be like a cranberry color. We picked these brown colors because all of the buildings that are going to be surrounding my building are all tones of brown. And I want to, at one point, I want to blend in, but then on the other part, I want to set myself off a little bit. So, this is a good combination of having earth tones and it will not be, you know, if I did yellows or something like that, it will be a, a, help blend in, I guess you could say. And with this, you allowing me to put this on the first floor and the second floor, I have agreed to put in a fire sprinkler system, absolutely.
I, trustees, you'll also notice in the recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission, besides the LP siding, that Mr. Lynette, our planner, reviews and approves the landscape plan, that the scrub brush in the area and the fence that's currently up there be repaired. The dumpster should be on the east end of the parking lot and enclosed. Submitted site plans, floor plan profiles and landscaping are to be incorporated into this approval. And as he, as Mr. Borgo stated, the sprink, the building will also be sprinkled. So, trustees, do we have any questions you would like to ask Mr. Borgo?
I assume would you be breaking ground?
It's my intent to break ground March of 2015. I was hoping to break ground this year, but that's not really going to work. I've, I've built enough buildings where I realize that you can't fight Mother Nature and I really don't want to put myself in a position of trying to get the crews to push and push and push to get it all enclosed before the winter, the snow has fly. So, we'll get all of the architectural, I'll get all my bids in, get everything approved from the village and then we'll break ground as soon. If, if we have a mild winter and it's decent, I wouldn't mind breaking ground for the foundation in February. But we'll just see how the weather plays out. I should also want to remind everyone that your village does not require sprinkler systems in its code of ordinances. I'm doing this on my own. Other questions?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. Did I have done a little bit of research with yourself and a couple of the municipalities that you're in? Nothing but high marks.
Well, thank you very much. We, we try to be the highest standard. In Manhattan, we are the highest standard. In Ottawa, we have the highest standard. And in Plainfield, we set the high end there too. There are others that have a higher cost or higher price unit, but they're, they were not really designed to be apartments. They were townhomes and condos that have been repossessed over the last four or five years and turned into apartments. So, we take a lot of pride in our product. So, I appreciate you doing the research and I'm glad you found that out.
Do you guys have your own company that does the lawn maintenance and the snow removal? Is that the thing you do, you hire out locally?
We, I have specific contracts with, every year I review them. But for the most part, I'm, I'm one of those builders that once I get my, my subcontractors lined up and once they prove themselves to me, I stick with them. If you, if you're constantly rotating through your contractors, your quality goes up and down and up and down and up and down. So, in this particular case, I have a contract and I will be renewing a contract with a landscaping firm. They do all my properties in Plainfield and Manhattan and I will have them be doing all of the work here too. Plowing the snow, shoveling, salting, cutting the grass, maintaining the landscape. They'll, they'll be one firm.
Other questions? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 14 dash 16, variance at 130 Orchard Court with the conditions specified by the P and Z Commission.
Motion.
Second. Okay. Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Wickler to approve ordinance 14 dash 15. Thank you. Let's skip the number. 14 dash 15, variance at for 130 Orchard Court. Clerk, please call the roll.
Oh, the motion? Hupkey.
Yeah. Me. I'm sorry. Cut you far ahead of you.
Down.
Okay.
Zoned out. Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wickler.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
And Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries and variance is approved.
Thank you. We look forward to doing well here and hopefully we'll be picking up some other things too. So, looking to be here for a long, long. If any of you have any questions along the way or you see that things are under construction and you'd like to walk through, please call me. And if you have any, anyone that, in the trades in the Piattone area, I'll always give them a shot. So, please let me know if you have anyone you'd like to make in contact. All right? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next item on the agenda, actually the last item on the agenda is to appoint, to appoint a committee to review proposals to provide engineering services for the Rath J Road and Corning Avenue STP project. George, you want to go through that?
Yeah, I'll read this and I'll have one, one small correction. Because of the dollar amounts involved in the STP projects for Rath J Road and Corning Avenue, federal regulations require that we seek RFQs, Request for Qualifications, from engineering firms to work on the project process. Similar to that used on the ICA grant. At that time, the board appointed a committee to review the RFQs, rank them and submit a report to the board for final action. Committee comprised of the village president, village administrator and manager of the streets and alleys may be the most appropriate considering it is a public works project. I have one correction to this, to this memo and that is we do not need to do this for Corning, it'll just be for Rath J Road, for the Rath J Road STP project. Corning project is a separate funding source and is below the threshold.
Okay. And I'll point out that this is the same practice that we use for the, was the ICA grant?
Yes.
Yeah. So, is there a motion to appoint village president, village administrator and manager of streets and alleys as a review committee for requests for qualifications on the upcoming Rath J Road STP project?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Wickler.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hupkey to approve the review committee as stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wickler.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Motion carries and we'll move forward on that project. We have completed our agenda and do we have any announcements relative to something due?
Yes, we do. We have, October 31st, we have the water bills are due and also currently the election packets for the April 7th, 2015 election. We have three trustees open and we have packets available.
Okay. And that, they're available until what point? What's the deadline on that? December?
I believe December is filing.
Yeah, okay.
So, we've posted on the webpage, I've also sent an email blast out. We will begin leaf pickup this week that will continue under permitting through the first Monday, week of the first Monday of December. And I believe the last Monday, I'll check that of this month, will be last weekend for branch pickup, the last, last week.
And that's always dependent upon if we have a storm after that point, then we need to run a special on, we will. Trustees, any questions or comments?
I just want to comment about, or compliment the paintless dent repair and then that other strip mall that Dr. Miller owns. They painted that within the last couple of weeks and it really looks nice over there now.
I agree. And I've also been a customer out there. They do good work.
It's amazing what a fresh coat of paint can do to curb, peel wise.
Oh, God, yes.
Phenomenon.
Good, noted after another act. All right, anything else, trustees? I will entertain a motion to adjourn the October 13th, 2014 Village of Piattone Board Meeting.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsythe to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wickler.
Yes.
Motion's carries, we're officially adjourned.